Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 9th, 2025 School Board of Manatee County Regular Board Meeting and Public Hearing. We do have a couple of different meetings set on the docket tonight. This first one is going to be all about our final millage and final budget. So we're excited to get that done. I know the finance team is definitely excited about that. Before we get going, I want to officially call this meeting to order, and then I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Tatum for the reading of our vision and the introduction of our invoker.
Great, okay, here we go. The school district of Manatee County will be an exemplary student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. And tonight, we have Brother Gio from Suncoast Baptist Church, and he will be doing our invocation.
Freddie Barry will rise and will do the pledge after the invocation.
Just want to thank everybody, especially the board, for, on behalf of Pastor Tillis and Suncoast Baptist Church, for having us here tonight to open this meeting in prayer. Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, I want to thank you for your goodness, your mercy, and your grace. I want to pray and I thank you, Lord, for the gospel of Jesus Christ. For the Bible says, "It is the power of God unto salvation." And it is that salvation that has changed my life and the direction thereof. And I thank you so much for that this evening. I do pray, Lord, for the board members this evening. I pray that you give them wisdom by the Spirit of God. I pray, Lord, that you'll be honored and glorified in your son this evening. I pray, Lord, that you bless every single person here tonight. And, Lord, I just pray for your grace in this chamber. And we pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me for the pledge. Our pledge is...
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. All right, item number five, approval of the agenda for this meeting currently. I'm looking for, there was no amendments or anything to the agenda, so I'm looking for a motion and a second.
So moved.
A second.
We got a motion and a second for the agenda for this particular meeting. Seeing no one wanting to speak, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of this agenda.
Yeah, I guess it's me. So sorry.
No, you're fine. It must not have gotten your second. All right, and that passes five to zero. All right, so I'm going to close this portion of the meeting. And then now I'm going to open up a public hearing regarding the final budget. And our public hearing, we will have a chance to hear from the public if there's anyone out there that would like to speak on the millage and budget. We'll get to that here in a minute. I first want to give it over to Ms. Sellers, so you can give us our presentation on the final budget.
All right, good evening. Tonight is the adoption of the final millage tax rates for the school year of 2025-26, then adoption of the final budget for school year 2025-26. This is required by state statute. And after which, the budget department notifies the tax collector. The tax collector then notifies the taxpayers of the tax rate in the county. Now, as a refresher on the FEFP funding, remember that is the Florida Education Finance Program. The acronym is FEFP. The legislature allocates state and local funding to all districts in Florida. And the local funds are from property taxes. The legislature sets that require local effort, RLE is the acronym I'll use for that one. And then it also includes the prior period funding adjustment and the discretionary millage. And now the district must levy the RLE to receive its portion of state-funded of the FEFP funds. Now, besides the required local effort and the prior period funding adjustments and the discretionary operating levy of .748 mil, there is a local referendum. It's the voted, additional voted one mil. And there is also the capital outlay or local capital improvement. We might sometimes also call it LCI. That is the 1.5 mil levy. The 1.5 mil is for building and maintenance of schools and administrative buildings. And the one mil, additional voted mil, is for additional instructional and other staff compensation, support for additional school-level STEAM programs, early learning, and enhanced safety and athletics. Now, a comparison of the final millage rate and the millage revenue comparison to the prior year is demonstrated on this slide. The second slide, this is slide six, the second slide is actually a duplicate, so I'll be skipping past that. But I just wanted to let you guys know that now in advance. I thought about taking out, but then it could have been like what was missing. So anyhow, the millages are noted in the budget book on page 31. It's attached in the board work, the budget book is, and you received the copies of that book earlier this week. The budget book for 2025-26 has on page 22, it starts the millage overview. It's got a history of the levies detailed on page 25. The RLE is 3.037 plus the .019, which was the prior period adjustment that came later from the legislature to bring it to 3.056. It decreased .005 from the prior year, which was 3.051. That's on budget, page 25 in the budget book. And then the property value increased 2.3 billion. So the revenue increased 14.7 million, and that is on page 30 in the budget book. Then on page 31, you're going to see an increase to the revenue. It's not as high as we have seen the last two fiscal years. The discretionary operating is .748 millage revenue. That increased 1.6 mil, a million. And the local referendum, one mil, that increased 2.2. The prior year was actually 6.5 mil. That just shows a difference in the change of the increase from year to year. And the local capital improvement revenue increased 3.3 million. Okay, let's see. I'm going to pass by seven. All right. Now, this slide is a demonstrate, we're required to be discussing the rollback rate. This is the actually same information that was presented in the tentative budget. We're required to talk about it in both, so it feels a bit repetitious. But the rollback rate, that is the millage rate needed to generate the same amount of revenue as last year if applied to the current assessed property values. So this millage rate of 6.304 is below the rollback rate by 1.16% this year. And if you would like to see how those calculations look, in the budget book on page 34 and 35, we have to file a DR Form 420-S. And it actually shows the calculations from the states, using the state and local rates to show you how that math goes. So if anybody ever was curious to figure out how we calculate that, that's where it's at. And this slide is actually just, it shows the effect of the rollback rate literally on each of the millage items. And you'll notice it was the required local effort that actually shows the more descriptive change. It includes the prior period adjustment that occurred like a month after we had gotten the other rate first from the state. And this is the millage rate trend. This goes back to fiscal year 2018-19. The millage rate this year is 6.304. Again, as we had, I've mentioned already that if we don't levy the RLE, we can't participate in the FEFP program. Now, the discretionary .748, if it were not to be levied, I know that they call it discretionary, but if we were to, if the board were to not levy that, district students would be at a disadvantage because the district would still be required to pay the charter schools their share of that discretionary millage revenue, even if we, if the board did not assess that. This particular slide, we introduced it first time last year. It demonstrates the state's FEFP funding trend over the past five years. The property tax revenue increased, also shows the collections, which were pretty much spot-on. The green line shows actual collections of the required local effort and the .748 discretionary taxes combined. And this is a same slide that you saw in the tentative budget. This demonstrates now for a real property taxpayer, if there were no increase to the average assessed property value, you would have actually seen a decrease in the taxes paid of like $38.23. And this slide demonstrates just how much increase in the property taxes is due to the increase in the average property value. All right, so this particular slide, I'll take the moment to, while we have the final budget that is shown here for 25-26, and where we're forecasting the fund balance to end, I wanted to take a moment because after we approve the millage rates and the budget book, we'll be bringing to you the annual financial report. Now, in the financial report, it is unaudited right now, and it actually has to, for fiscal year-end, June 30, 2025, it has to be submitted to DOE by Thursday, September 11. And in the budget book, or sorry, in the annual financial report, we are reporting that the general fund ended with a balance of 120 million. That was a general fund reserve of 15.28%. I wanted to point out that out of that 15.28%, that the state requires the district to maintain a 3% general fund reserve. And the district's board policy requires a contingency general fund reserve of 8.5%. This would leave just 6.78% of the general fund, or 39 million, above the board's contingency general fund reserve, of which, out of that 39 million, 30 million is designated for restricted funds like the grants and the non-spendable inventory funds. And part of that, 39, the remainder consists of the carryforwards that I'm about to talk about is going to be making up the budget for fiscal year 25-26. The expected balance, as you see on slide 14, of all of the funds is 171 million. Out of that, you can see that 37% is the general fund, and the capital is 38% of all of the funds. This is due to the capital tip past the general and as a result of the COPs revenue that was brought in in March related to like 150 million. So that's where we saw capital surpass the operating fund. Now, the budget for the 25-26 fiscal year for the general fund, you'll see on that top row there, the ending balance is forecasted to be at 63.7 million. That is a general fund reserve of 9.77%. Now, the, there will be, this deficit spending from what I had just talked about, where the fiscal year, this year is ending at 120 million, can be attributed to, the biggest part is related to, 47% of that balance is related to carryforward from this prior 24-25 fiscal year, from, that's still related to the schools, departments, and programs. The programs, when I talk about those carryforwards, we're talking about the ones that are related with grants, MTC, categoricals, and purchase orders that rolled over from 24-25, still to be accounted for and to be spent in those specific categories, and that totals 30 million. The next big set of this spend down is related to 20% for the charter schools' projections that are, over-projection of their enrollments that we're projecting to have to account for throughout the year. And then the third next part has to do with an increase in the school staffing and departments. We have two additional schools that are also opening, that's 19%. And then the remainder of that balance is related to, I'll call it miscellaneous. We've got utility increases expected. We've got FRS employer rates to be increased, and textbook adoptions, for example, and that's about 13%. So it's a, it's a budget of 1.74 billion. All right. And lastly, we just bring this, just to highlight, as I had mentioned in the tentative budget, if we had changes from the tentative to the final, we go ahead and show it up here. These were the different changes in the revenues and the expenditures from that tentative budget to this final budget that we bring you tonight. Some of the significance items that are noted on this slide relates to recording and reporting the EVOL leases. When you do a lease, you're required to both book, related to GAAP, you're supposed to report both the revenue and the expenditures of equal amounts. This also accounts for, one of the bigger movements that occurred between the tentative and final had to do with some school staff changes. This included the third-grade academy. And then we also had a removal of the reserve that was set aside for anticipated revenue reduction, which was related to the AP, ACE, IB, and dual enrollments. And then lastly, we had an adjustment in the estimated carryforward for the assigned programs and the restricted programs. And what I wanted to highlight now, as we end this public hearing, is in the budget book, starting on page 71, in that book is a general fund breakdown by each of the divisions, the instruction, the operations, the business services, and the superintendent's division. And those expenses are listed by school and department level and it groups it into three categories, the personnel costs, operating costs, and the capital costs. Besides, there's also allocations in the back of the book as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're still in the public hearing, so I do want to invite anyone in the public that's out there to come up, and you can address for three minutes regarding the final millage and final budget rates and resolutions 2025-005, 2025-006, and 2025-008. Is anyone that would like to come up and speak regarding any of those? The Leadership Manatee Volunteers? Been there, I wouldn't have been there. All right, so we're going to go ahead and close, since there are no public comments, we're going to go ahead and close this public hearing. Then we're going to reconvene the regular meeting. And we're going to move to item number seven in the regular meeting, which is new business non-consent items. Item number one, Superintendent Chat.
I recommend that the board approve the required local effort millage, including prior period adjustment for the fiscal year 2025-26 of 3.056 mils.
So moved.
Second.
Chad, if I manage to have a quick comment too. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Hells, could you go back on your presentation to page 10? I just want to point something out, as long as we're here, because I, I hear this commented on from time to time about what is the school, what is the school district and school board doing with all the extra money that we're getting from rising property values? And so I just wanted to take a quick second to highlight what happens here. So if the team in the back, if you guys could put that, put the presentation back up, just so folks...
Page 10.
There we go, thank you, thank you, guys. Obviously, on this chart, the green bars are the taxable value of all, of all taxable property in Manatee County, which this year is, is 80 billion, which would mean one mil on 80 billion would raise 80 million dollars. And so when people ask me, or I hear people commenting and saying, well, the Manatee County government, the Manatee County School Board, they're getting all this additional revenue because these values are going up. And in truth, there is some benefit to us, but I want to point everyone to that top blue line, which is our total millage. And as you can see, back in 1819, when the total taxable value was 38.8 billion, our millage rate was 7.3. And our taxable value has doubled, up to 80 million. But you can see that the total millage collected by us is now a full mil lower. So that's just how school financing kind of works, is that when values are going up, the total millage comes down. And this millage is set, well, I guess mostly by us, but what we get through FEFP is set through the state. But, and then when, in kind of what is an odd, I'm not sure what the function, I'm not sure that's the right word, but when property values are falling, the millage rates go up. So it's, I just wanted to, I just want to make sure, it's kind of, school financing is kind of complex. And so I just want to make sure people understand, if they're watching this or listening to it, that, yeah, our values are going up, but our, but our total millage rate is coming down to kind of compensate for that. That's all I want to say. Thanks, Chad.
Yeah, Ms. Brack.
I'm just going to tell on the end of what Mr. Kennedy said, that when you see the numbers here and the taxable value and what we collect locally, what we collect locally for the RLE goes to the state. And the state decides what we get to charge the taxpayers collectively. So, am I correct in that? So when we, when you say that if we don't charge this, the state will not give us grant funding, is basically what you're saying.
They won't give us the FEFP.
They won't give us the, right, same thing. So when people see this chart, I want them to understand too that the dollars that are reflected, that the tax collector collects, doesn't necessarily mean that's what we get. I mean, we only get a little portion of this because other districts, their RLEs may be 4% or 5% because they can't maintain their school and staff levels. While we actually have a pretty good system going on here. So, so I wanted to add that. And then to the discretionary, the .748 is about the same thing. You know, the state tells us what we can do. It's only the voted mil. And also not in this, I wanted to point out to people that the half-cent sales tax is not in that because we have to use that for a whole different thing. So I just wanted everyone to, I just wanted to tell on what he said, that the state pretty much directs the districts at what we can collect. It's the local effort. It's the local effort that we get to decide, and that's what they did overwhelmingly last November, so. Uh, I wanna say, first of all, to go back to, uh, pages, uh, nine, I just made a note to myself to say, um, through this budget process is very long, because there's a lot of different, uh, categoricals, you gotta figure out utilities, staffing, transportation, all, maintenance of plant, all of those things. I went through that budget book tooth and nail, and I wanna thank you, Ms. Sellers, for spending time with me last Friday, uh, because I had some questions, uh, some related from the AFR to this, but she was very, uh, helpful, and giving me the answer and the questions that I had, but I, it's a very long process, and we get a tentative budget in June, I think it is, and so...
July twenty-ninth, y'all approved that one.
Pardon me?
A month ago, July twenty...
Was it July, okay, July twenty-ninth, everything's blending. And I went through that tooth and nail, and then we get the actual budget, and then the AFR. So it's all kinds of runs together between July to now. So it's a lot of homework, a lot of reading, a lot of sticky notes and highlighters, I'll even say.
Yes.
Okay, so I also wanna agree from here.
I'm the same.
So, I just want, you know, and, and again, you pointing out that this board collectively said, we wanna have a healthy reserve of eight point five percent. That is our rainy day fund. That is, if we need more staffing, because all of a sudden we got a, uh, influx of students, and we need to have staffing for them. All of those things is what we have that little rainy day fund for. So, um, I will say on page fifteen of your packet, um, expenditures versus revenues, someone might question that, that is, because our expenditures is, we're using some of our carryover for things that we had anticipating spending, and that's why it kinda looks a little wonky, I'll call it. But, uh, that's one category I really looked deep into, because I didn't want the public to think that we're spending more than we're taking in, it's that we carried over, it's a little bit more than we expected, but we have plans for all those funds. So I just wanna say thank you to the finance team. I don't remember...
I, uh, failed to introduce, um, this is our budget coordinator, Roz Media. Um, our budget director is on a vacation.
Okay.
She just left at the beginning of this week.
Well deserved.
So, sorely hurt after all this. So anyhow, but, um, uh, yeah, the team has been working really hard, and we actually have the finance team in, in the back of the room as well, too, um, since the AFR is also coming to you to be reviewed, to our finance director, Kathy Miley is in the back, along with our payroll administrator, uh, Amy Allen. So anyhow, it, it's a collective group, because there's a, it's a lot of parts, as you said, they're all working together. Um, the budget and the actual, this is at the end of the fiscal year, this is where the two meet, um, and so, um, as I had mentioned to say, so the AFR does correlate with that budget book, um, you've got your budget to actuals, uh, that kind of a thing, so, um, thank you very much as well, too. I'm so happy to see it come to the board.
All good, mighty good. And it goes back even further than July, I mean, even into June, May, back to where staff is working on staffing and allocation.
In all honesty, in December, um, the budget department starts to send down.
Starts going.
It'll be for twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Right, the staffing binder. I forgot the staffing binder.
The staffing, yeah.
Yes, exactly, the staff binder, too.
Maybe that's what I got in June, I don't know.
Um, all right, so, um, let's go ahead and vote, we have a motion and a second to approve the required local effort millage, including prior period adjustment for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six of three point zero five six mils. And that passes five to zero. Uh, Superintendent Chapman?
I recommend that the board approve the discretionary operating millage for the fiscal year twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six of zero point seven four eight mils.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second there. No one lit up to speak, so let's go ahead and vote. To recommend the board approve the discretionary operating millage for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six of point seven four eight mils. That passes five to zero. Superintendent Chapman?
I recommend that the board approve the additional operating voted levy millage for the fiscal year twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six of one point zero mil.
So moved.
A second.
Motion, second, is on the floor, I don't see any board members, um, lit up to speak, so let's go ahead and vote on, uh, the recommendation to approve the additional operating voted levy millage for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six of one mil. That passes five to zero. Superintendent Chapman?
I recommend that the board approve the local capital improvement millage for the fiscal year twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six of one point five mils.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second is on the floor, seeing no board members, um, lit to speak, let's go ahead and vote on the motion to approve the local capital outlay millage for, for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six of one point five mils, and that passes five to zero. And Superintendent Chapman?
I recommend that the board approve the resolution twenty-two-five dash zero zero five, adopting the fiscal year twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six total millage of six point three zero four mils, and resolution twenty-two-five dash zero zero eight, determining the amount of revenues and the millage to be levied.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, I do not see any board members lit to speak, so let's vote on the approval of resolution twenty-two-five dash zero zero five, twenty-two-five dash zero zero eight, and that passes five to zero. All right, moving on to item number seven point two, um, approval of the final budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, Superintendent Chapman?
I recommend that the board approve resolution twenty-two-six dash zero zero six, adopting the fiscal year twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six final budget, in the amount of one billion seven hundred and forty-seven million nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, um, seeing no board members lit to speak, let's go ahead and vote to approve the resolution twenty-two-six dash zero zero six, adopting the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. And that passes five to zero. Um, item number seven point three, Superintendent Chapman?
Uh, this is the approval, I don't wanna have a script for this one, uh, approval of the, uh, approval of the annual financial report and all official parts thereof for the fiscal year ended twenty, uh, ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
Seeing a motion and a second.
Getting on the action here, I was waiting for Mr. Tatum, but...
I seconded a bunch of things, somebody else has turned.
Mr. Tatum, you lit up to speak?
Are we gonna, are we gonna do board comments tonight? It's on the agenda, I could say what I have to say for the board comments, if, if we are gonna do them.
Um, yeah, I mean, obviously, we're gonna have two different ones, but yeah, we can.
All right, yeah, and I'll save it for that.
Perfect.
That, that's all I had.
Okay. All right, um, seeing no one else to lit up to speak, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the financial report and all official parts thereof of the fiscal year ended in June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, and that passes five to zero. Mr. Chapman, superintendent remarks?
Yeah, just brief remarks, obviously, I wanna thank, uh, uh, our deputy superintendent of business services, Rachel Sellers, and her stellar team for, uh, spending, uh, months and months on, on this, building, you know, you have to simultaneously build the budget as you're closing out another budget, uh, and, uh, it's quite a, uh, a song and dance kinda thing, and, uh, it lands, it always has to land on this night and this time, uh, to, to pass muster with state statute. So, uh, it's a brilliant job, and, um, uh, it's just a, a great team that, again, keeps us, uh, in a very financially responsible, uh, uh, way here at the school district, uh, and we're very proud of that, and our credit ratings keep approving, keep, keep improving, um, because the markets and the financial institutions see us as a very strong government entity, uh, because of this team, so, and because of you all, too, as well, uh, in, in watching over this. So, uh, it just shows the community, um, that, um, you know, we are good stewards of, of tax dollars here in Manatee County, and we'll continue to do that. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Board comments, anybody?
Some of the sellers and your staff, so, about twenty years ago, I went to my class reunion, right, and I, you know, when you go to class reunions, right, you talk to people, what are you doing now with your life? And I, I don't remember the gentleman's name, and he said, well, I work over at the water treatment plant, and I thought, and he kinda said it like, ah, nobody cares, it's a boring job, you know, it's just, I just work at the water treatment plant. And I was like, well, I've never met anybody at the water treatment plant. What are you doing? It was very fascinating, right, he went through the whole water treatment thing, and you gotta get a national water treatment certification to work at the water treatment plant, and, you know, we just all expect that clean water comes out of our shower, and it comes out of our faucets, and it's, just happens, right, but there's a whole process behind the scenes going on. So, now, I will say that the, the briefings that you gave us were not the most interesting briefings and exciting briefings I've had at the dais, but, as Mr. Chapman said, our credit rating is good, we're not broke, you know, we have, we have a nice reserve, and to a large degree, that is because of your efforts and the efforts of your staff, so thank you very much, and that's all I have to say.
Yeah, dito. Anybody else?
No.
I just wanted to, to reiterate as well, that, you know, I, I see how hard you all work, even though I'm not in the building that often, um, because when I am, everybody's moving around like this, um, so I have to assume that's all the time. Um, and, uh, thank you so much for presenting all of this, taking the time, I hope everybody, and Gina's on vacation, but I hope everybody else gets at least, you know, a personal day to go and sit somewhere comfortable and put your feet up, and not think about budgets now that you've made it to this point, um, 'cause you all deserve it, and, and thank you very much.
Chad, if I may?
Yeah.
I just have, uh, one more, I guess, piece of commentary to make, and since the, um, leadership manatee group is here from the chamber, this might be a good time to say this, but, um, again, some feedback we sometimes hear from the public, or overhear from the public, is that, you know, the school district's budget is X number of dollars this year, it's, I assume this is the largest ever, almost one point eight billion, that's the biggest number I've ever seen in my time around here. Um, but I'd like people to keep in mind that this is one point eight billion of economic activity that, for the most part, stays in Manatee County. So, yeah, it's a big number, but it's also a big economic driver, um, for this county. So, um, in addition to all the great things going on in the school district, and in our schools, and our classrooms, so I just always wanna keep that kind of at the fore.
And we are the largest employer in the county.
And we, thank you, Heather, we are the largest employer, and doing a, doing a darn good job at it, too. So, thanks, Adam. Thanks.
All right, thank you all, that, um, concludes this meeting, um, so I will officially call this meeting to adjourn. Um, board, do we need time, or are we ready to go to the next?
I'll get these.
All right, we'll take, we'll take a five-minute, five, ten minutes?
Okay.
Say ten-minute recess, so at six oh eight, we'll come back at six twenty-ish.[1419.15]
Thank you.
I just want to ask real quick. I want to make sure, did we do anything legally wrong?
No, you're legal.
Okay. So, that's all, real quick, you can say something. Here, sorry, I want to go, Ms. Felton, Ms. Mr. Kennedy.
I am not going to support this. I feel that because, and I read about both of the contracts, I read the one from the previous superintendent, sent my comments to Mr. Die, read the new contract, sent my comments to Mr. Die. And I feel that because it is so similar to the previous contract, there is, there isn't anything in there that I had any reservations about, that I don't feel that anyone should have any reservations about. We trusted the chair to do this on our behalf, rather than all five of us sit down and do these negotiations. I feel that it was all done in good faith, that we had that expectation. The placeholder was there for this to be done today. And so, I'm not going to support moving it.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yeah, I don't really have much left to say, because everything I was going to say has already been said by my colleagues. But I do want to express to Ms. Spray my appreciation for raising your concerns, because that's what we're here to do. To Mr. Tatum's point, I agree. We are, in this moment, kind of representatives of our, of our districts and our constituents across the county. I think you're right. It did come to us late. But we did authorize the chair to go through this process on behalf of us. And I am ready, I'm also ready to move forward tonight because of the amount of feedback that we got during this process, and it was excellent. You're right. And it was overwhelmingly in favor of Dr. Breslin. And I, you know, this is, this is an agreement between the five of us and our superintendent, as representatives of the community. And so, yeah, I do agree. We got it late. We should have had it last week. But we're here now. And I'm, I'm ready to move forward.
I just needed a time to express my concerns over it. I didn't expect anyone to support me in this. I just needed my time to vent and say what I felt. And in the future, Mr. Chair, if you ever negotiate another contract.
Hopefully, we never negotiate.
Hopefully, we won't.
A renewal.
But I do believe to your point, I think we can absolutely build some kind of policy based on when this does happen.
Right.
Maybe it's not for us. Maybe it's for the future board.
Right.
Right? Somewhere down the road, that we, we went through this, we know. So, maybe we do put some parameters based on, on that. So, when you do go into a search like this, and obviously, the date was known and we knew when it was happening. But if we feel like, hey, we need seven days, six days, 48 hours, whatever that number is, we can absolutely build a policy based on that. Hopefully, I never have to deal with that again. But if, but for the future boards, I think it's absolutely prudent to do that.
Right. So, make a note of that, future superintendent.
Yeah, we could build that, we could build that policy.
To build that policy, that anytime there's a contract of this magnitude, that we need at least a, I don't know, seven-day, forty, I was happy with 48 hours. I really was willing to look and review, compare notes from the last search to now, to the process that we went through over my weekend. I was fine to do that, expected to do that, actually. I planned my weekend around it. So, I just needed to get it out. So, it's not, I didn't expect anybody to go with me. Now, it's fine. I just wanted to at least say it. So, it's fine.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yeah, I don't really have much left to say, because everything I was going to say has already been said by my colleagues. But I do want to express to Ms. Spray my appreciation for raising your concerns, because that's what we're here to do. To Mr. Tatum's point, I agree. We, we are, in this moment, kind of representatives of our, of our districts and our constituents across the county. I think you're right. It did come to us late. But we did authorize the chair to go through this process on behalf of us. And I am ready, I'm also ready to move forward tonight because of the amount of feedback that we got during this process, and it was excellent. You're right. And it was overwhelmingly in favor of Dr. Breslin. And I, you know, this is, this is an agreement between the five of us and our superintendent, as representatives of the community. And so, yeah, I do agree. We got it late. We should have had it last week. But we're here now. And I'm, I'm ready to move forward.
I just needed a time to express my concerns over it. I didn't expect anyone to support me in this. I just needed my time to vent and say what I felt. And in the future, Mr. Chair, if you ever negotiate another contract.
Hopefully, we never negotiate.
Hopefully, we won't.
A renewal.
But I do believe to your point, I think we can absolutely build some kind of policy based on when this does happen.
Right.
Maybe it's not for us. Maybe it's for the future board.
Right.
Right? Somewhere down the road, that we, we went through this, we know. So, maybe we do put some parameters based on, on that. So, when you do go into a search like this, and obviously, the date was known and we knew when it was happening. But if we feel like, hey, we need seven days, six days, 48 hours, whatever that number is, we can absolutely build a policy based on that. Hopefully, I never have to deal with that again. But if, but for the future boards, I think it's absolutely prudent to do that.
Right. So, make a note of that, future superintendent.
Yeah, we could build that, we could build that policy.
To build that policy, that anytime there's a contract of this magnitude, that we need at least a, I don't know, seven-day, forty, I was happy with 48 hours. I really was willing to look and review, compare notes from the last search to now, to the process that we went through over my weekend. I was fine to do that, expected to do that, actually. I planned my weekend around it. So, I just needed to get it out. So, it, it's not, I didn't expect anybody to go with me. Now, it's fine. I just wanted to at least say it. So, it's fine.
Ms. Kennedy?
It's a good point, Ms. Spray. I remember thinking, I think we selected Dr. Breslin the 26th, right? Wasn't that the day, August 20? And I thought, two weeks, man, that's going to be quick. But, so, it's a good point. I mean, maybe we should put a policy in place. We need to see it 48 hours in advance, 72 hours in advance. The pros of, the cons of waiting are, don't outweigh the pros of moving forward. So, it's a very excellent point that you brought.
I just had to say something.
Yeah, good.
What am I going to say?
That's why I seconded it, so we could have a discussion.
Right. Thank you.
All right. So, let's go ahead and vote on the amendment to pull item 8.1.
I don't see anything.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, this is not a vote to approve the agenda?
No. Well, we had a second on her.
Oh, I'm sorry, the motion.
We got to vote on the amendment first.
Yep.
I can.
You want us to just do that physically?
Yes.
All right. All those in motion, or excuse me, all those in favor to accept the amendment to pull 8.1 from the agenda, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand, same sign, aye. Passes.
I'm a, I was a, yeah.
The motion fails.
I made the motion.
Motion fails.
Passes, or excuse me, it fails, four to one.
Right.
I'm a yea to pull, there and nay to not.
Correct. So, it was, it was one yes.
I made the motion.
Four no's.
Can't say no.
But you didn't raise and say, you could have voted against making the motion. So, that, that amendment fails. So, now, we're moving to the approval of the agenda vote.
I was offering.
We already had a motion and a second on that, correct?
Right. Right.
All right. So, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the agenda. And that passes five to zero. Item number three, approval of the minutes. Superintendent Chapman?
Superintendent recommends approval of the minutes of the August 5, 2025 school board meeting, August 8, 2025 board workshop, the August 12, 2025 meeting, selection of superintendent finalists, and August 15, 2025 special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
So, we have a motion, a second on the floor, see no board members lit up to speak. Let's go ahead and vote on the approval, the stated minutes of those meetings. Passes five to zero. Item number four, public comments. No public comments, correct? Moving on, item number five, consent items. Superintendent Chapman?
Superintendent recommends approval of the consent agenda for the school board meeting September 9, 2025.
So moved.
Second. So, we have a motion, a second on the floor, see no board members lit up to speak. Let's go ahead and vote on the approval, the stated minutes of those meetings. Passes five to zero. Item number four, public comments. No public comments, correct? Moving on, item number five, consent items. Superintendent Chapman?
Superintendent recommends approval of the consent agenda for the school board meeting September 9, 2025.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right. Let's go ahead and approve, vote to approve the consent items.
Oh, that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
All right. Moving on to, or excuse me, that passes five to zero. Moving on to item number seven, new business, non-consent. Superintendent Chapman, 7.1.
Superintendent recommends approval of the budget amendments for June 2025.
So moved.
Thank you. I was going to have to get that one, too. Second.
So, we have a motion, a second. Ms. Sellers, I know you did a lot of financial discussions tonight.
Yeah.
But we got a chance to obviously do the June amendments. So, go ahead and give those to us if you would.
Yes. So, the June amendments also included fiscal year-end amendments as well. So, there were actually 629 budget amendments for the month of June. Forty-four chart strings were over a million. And all of these were related to expenditures where we were moving funds from the reserves in the 2425 to be carried forwards into fiscal year 2526. This was in the general fund, in the general fund, the voted millage program, and in the capital fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know we got briefed on this in our meeting, so I don't see any board members lit up to speak. So, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the budget amendments for 20, June 2025. And that passes five to zero. Item number two is the, or excuse me, Superintendent Chapman?
Superintendent recommends year-to-date charter school financial statement summary through June 30, 2025. Approval.
That's fine.
I'll move.
I'll second. All right. Let's go ahead and vote. This usually is a, is a, an item that we put in our just information.
I just wanted to say something that Mr. Tatum says, "You have boring numbers and all those kind of things." But I'm wide-eyed and fascinated on the other side. I just wanted to share that with you, because my husband said, "I can't believe how much you read those books," even to this, you know. And I told him, "It's like reading a novel to me." It fascinates me with a number. So, I just wanted to say that again. Okay.
All right. Let's go ahead and vote on the year-to-date charter school financial statement summary through June 30, 2025. That passes five to zero. Item number three, superintendent Chapman?
Superintendent recommends approval of a new job description of associate superintendent of administration and strategic engagements.
So moved.
I'll second.
And Superintendent Chapman, I'll jump in and.
And I, and I read about both of the contracts. I read the, the one from the previous superintendent. Sent my comments to Mr. Die. Read the new contract, sent my comments to Mr. Die. And I feel that because it is so similar to the previous contract, there is, there isn't anything in there that I had any reservations about, that I don't feel that anyone should have any reservations about. We trusted the Chair to, to do this on our behalf. Rather than all five of us sit down and, and do these negotiations. I feel that it was all done in good faith. That we had that expectation. The placeholder was there for this to be done today. And so I, I'm not going to support moving it.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yeah, I don't really have much left to say because everything I was going to say has already been said by my colleagues, but I do want to express to Ms. Spray my appreciation for raising your concerns because that's what we're here to do. To Mr. Tatum's point, I agree. We, we are in this moment kind of representatives of, of our, of our districts and our, our constituents across the county. I think you're right. It, it did come to us late. But we did authorize the Chair to go through this process on behalf of us. And I'm, I, I am ready. I'm also ready to move forward tonight because of the amount of feedback that we got during this process and it was excellent. You're right. And it was overwhelmingly in favor of Dr. Breslin. And I, you know, th- this is, this is an agreement between the five of us and our superintendent as representatives of, of the community. And so, um, yeah, I, I do agree. We got it late. We should have had it last week. But we're here now and I'm, I'm ready to move forward and, and uh.
I just needed the time to express my concerns over it. I didn't expect anyone to support me in this. I just needed my time to vent and say what I felt. And in the future, Mr. Chair, if you ever negotiate another contract.
Hopefully we never negotiate.
Hopefully, hopefully we won't. Uh.
A renewal.
But I, but I, but I do believe to your point, I think we, we can absolutely build some kind of policy based on when this does happen. And maybe it's not for us. Maybe it's for the future board.
Right.
Right? Somewhere down the road. That we, we went through this, we know. So maybe we do put some parameters based on, on that. So when you do go into a search like this, and obviously the date was known and we knew when it was happening. But if we feel like, hey, we need seven days, six days, forty-eight hours, whatever that number is, we can absolutely build a, a policy based on that. Hopefully I never have to deal with that again. But if, but for the future boards, I think it's absolutely prudent to do that.
Right. So make a note of that, future superintendent.
Yeah, we could build that, we could build that policy.
To build that policy that anytime there's a contract of this magnitude, that we need at least a, I don't know, seven day, forty. I was happy with forty-eight hours. I really was willing to look and review, compare notes from the last search to now, to the process that we went through over my weekend. I was fine to do that. I expected to do that, actually. I planned my weekend around it. So I just needed to get it out. So it, it's not, I didn't expect anybody to go with me. Now it's fine. I just wanted to at least say it. So it's fine.
That's, it's a good point, Ms. Ray. I remember thinking, I think we selected Dr. Breslin on the 26th, right? Wasn't that the day, August 20? And I thought, two weeks, man, that's going to be quick. But, and so it's a good point. I mean, maybe we should put a policy in place. We need to see it forty-eight hours in advance. Seventy-two hours in advance were cons of waiting, or the pros of, let's see, the cons of waiting are, don't outweigh the pros of moving forward. So it's a very excellent point that you brought up.
I just had to say something.
Yeah, good.
What am I gonna say?
That's why I seconded it, so we could have a discussion.
Right. Thank you.
Alright, so let's go ahead and vote on the amendment to pull item eight point one.
I don't see anything.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, this is not a vote to approve the agenda?
No, well, we had a second on her amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry, the motion.
We gotta vote on the amendment first.
Yep.
I can.
You want us to just do that physically? Alright. All those in motion, or excuse me, all those in favor to accept the amendment to pull eight point one from the agenda, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand, same sign, aye. Passes.
I'm a, I was a, yeah. I made the motion.
Motion fails.
Passes, or excuse me, it fails four to one.
Right. I know. I'm a yea to pull. There and nay to not.
Correct. So it was, it was one yes.
I made the motion. Can't say no.
But you didn't raise and say, you could have voted against making the motion.
Right.
So that, that amendment fails. So now we're moving to the approval of the agenda vote.
I was offering.
We already had a motion and a second on that, correct?
Right.
Alright, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the agenda. And that passes five to zero. Item number three, approval of the minutes. Superintendent Chapman?
The superintendent recommends approval of the minutes of the August 5th, 2025 school board meeting, August 8th, 2025 board workshop, the August 12th, 2025 meeting, selection of superintendent finalists, and August 15th, 2025 special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Do you have a motion, a second on the floor? Seeing no board members lit up to speak, let's go ahead and vote on the approval the stated minutes of those meetings. Passes five to zero. Item number four, public comments. No public comments, correct? Moving on to item number five, consent items. Superintendent Chapman?
Superintendent recommends approval of the consent agenda for the school board meeting September 9th, 2025.
So moved.
I'll second.
Alright, let's go ahead and approve. Vote to approve the consent items.
Oh, that, I'm not motion, I'm sorry.
Alright, um, moving on to, or excuse me, that passes five to zero. Moving on to item number seven, new business, non-consent. Superintendent Chapman, seven point one.
The superintendent recommends approval of the budget amendments for June 2025.
So moved.
Thank you. I was going to have to get that one too. Second.
Do you have a motion, a second? Ms. Sellers, I know you did a lot of financial discussions tonight. But we got a chance to, to obviously do the, the June amendments. So go ahead and give those to us if you would.
Yes, so the June amendments also included fiscal year-end amendments as well. So there were actually 629 budget amendments for the month of June. Forty-four chart strings were over a million. And all of these were related to expenditures where we were moving funds from the reserves in the 2425 to be carried forwards into fiscal year 2526. This was in the general fund, in the general fund, the voted millage program, and in the capital fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know we got briefed on this in our meeting, so I don't see any board members lit up to speak. So let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the budget amendments for twenty, June 2025. And that passes five to zero. Item number two is the, or excuse me, Superintendent Chapman?
Superintendent recommends year-to-date charter school financial statement summary through June 30th, 2025 approval.
That's fine.
I'll move.
I'll second. Alright, let's go ahead and vote. That is usually is a, is a, an item that we put in our just information.
I just wanted to say something that Mr. Tatum says you have boring numbers and all those kind of things. But I'm wide-eyed and fascinated on the other side. I just wanted to share that with you because my husband said, I can't believe how much you read those books, even to this, you know? And I told him, it's like reading a novel to me. It, it fascinates me with a number. So I just wanted to say that again. Okay.
Alright, let's go ahead and vote on the year-to-date charter school financial statement summary through June 30th. That passes five to zero. Item number three, Superintendent Chapman?
The superintendent recommends approval of a new job description of associate superintendent of administration and strategic engagements.
So moved.
I'll second.
And Superintendent Chapman, I'll jump in and, and tell everybody, the board, I know we know, but for the public, this is just so you don't have to talk about your own job description. But we thank you for your service as, as superintendent for the past several months. And this is a, a, you know, tweaking some job description of what you were in before and then adding to it. So we appreciate your service over the last several months and look forward to this new job description that'll be posted. And so let's go ahead and, and approve or vote on approving the new job description of associate superintendent administration and strategic engagement. And that passes five to zero. Alright, item number eight, new business. No superintendent recommendation, so this is up for us, board. Item eight point one is approval of the contract for the new superintendent, Dr. Lori Breslin for School District of Manatee County. Mr. Die, may I give it over to you real quick? Give us a rundown, legalese-wise of the contract?
Thank you, Chairman. And I want to say thank you to the board, the Chair for the input that you gave me throughout the process, for Dr. Vogel's help was very much appreciated. As, as you already stated, when you were discussing previously, the contract is, is very similar to the previous one. As far as the form, I'll, I'll run through the highlights of it for the benefit of the public. And I'll point out any differences between that and the previous superintendent's contract. The term would be from today's date to June 30th, 2028. So slightly shorter than three-year term because of the time that it begins.
Right.
Base salary is 245,000. That's in this form, if approved by the board. That's different than the base salary of the previous superintendent, which was 235,000. But it's just slightly more than the base salary was at the time when, when he left the district, which is around 244,000, just under. Performance review, same as in the previous contract. It does require establishing superintendent goals prior to each year. I don't know if this has really been done. So you, that's, that's something that's supposed to be done, called for by the contract. And those are, those are the personal goals that the board wants for the superintendent, not just the five-year plan. Has annual evaluation of the superintendent, both by the board and a self-evaluation, which is done in June of each year. Vacation, sick days, auto allowance, expense account, insurance, personal leave, retirement, all the same as in the previous contract. I'll summarize those. The vacation, twenty-five paid days can accumulate up to sixty days. Over sixty, you forfeit, so you don't get paid over sixty. Sick days, one day per month, unused sick days accumulate and can be cashed out at fifty percent later or 100% on retirement. And they they do accrue. Auto allowance, $650 a month, same as the prior contract. Expense account of $400 per month. This is a reimbursement expense account for expenses related to the job. Insurance, basically health insurance, same as other district employees at the senior administrator level. Personal leave, six days per year. This gets charged against sick leave, but doesn't accumulate. Retirement participation in the Florida retirement system at the senior administrator level. Other benefits paid by the board, conferences, professional conferences, meetings, memberships and professional groups. There are four listed memberships in the contract. Community groups and other groups not listed in the contract do require board approval. Disability, slightly different than the prior contract. The if the superintendent became disabled, they would, she would receive salary and benefits for ninety days. And after ninety days, the board could terminate. It does include disability policy that other, that other members of the district receive. State leadership program. This is the, the state statute that provides leadership program for superintendents. It's mandatory to participate, same as in the pre, prior contract. And once completed, it does increase the superintendent's salary per the statute. Performance pay, that's, this is a new section that was requested by board members. The contract before you has a $10,000 annual bonus for the district reaching A, A district with the State of Florida Department of Education. Additional $2,500 bonus, annual bonus, if the graduation rate reaches 90% or above. Termination, the termination without cause was modified to just be a thirty-day notice rather than the ninety-day notice that was in the prior contract. With, without cause does trigger severance pay, currently capped at twenty weeks by statute. With, with cause termination, no notice. There's a right to appeal under state law. Does not, does not provide severance under those circumstances. Agreement can be terminated by the superintendent with thirty-day notice to the board. In that circumstance, there would be no severance. Extension of the superintendent's term, same as the last contract. The parties agree, would agree no later than March 31st of 2028. Whether to extend beyond the June 30th, 2028 term. So that concludes my summary.
Thank you.
Well done.
Alright.
So you need a motion?
We need a motion to approve the contract.
So moved.
As stated by Mr. Die.
So moved.
I'll second.
So you have a motion and a second. So open discussion, Mr. Tatum, you'd let up first?
Just a couple of things. I'll end up supporting the contract, but there are a couple of sections I'd like to discuss. Real quick, let me pull it up on Word here. So section six point two.
Yeah, probably the same thing I pointed out.
I like the idea where it says, board and superintendent agree to jointly establish a written schedule of goals, school district goals, prior to the beginning of each school year and during the tenure of the superintendent. We obviously do our annual evaluation. I would just encourage us and I would encourage Dr. Breslin to maybe do that more often on an informal basis, at least once a quarter. Just a thought, you know, I mean, it's, what happens a lot of times is you, you know, everything's going along, you go a whole year and you don't get any feedback. And all of a sudden, at the end of the year, your boss comes to you and says, well, you haven't been doing what I wanted you to do. And you're like, I don't know, why didn't you tell me, you know? But the way you avoid that is you get regular feedback during the year. And hopefully the, the person that is working for you comes to you and seeks it out. But if they don't, you should still go to them. And so it's just a suggestion for all of you. Do it on at least a quarterly basis. And maybe even if Dr. Breslin would like to do that. And then, you know, it's, it's always good to come to those meetings too with some ideas about, here's where I think maybe I'm not meeting the goals that we talked about. And that just starts a good discussion. So that's a good thing. So I'm glad that that's in there. Let's see, section seven point six. Again, if you, Dr. Breslin, if, if, when you get these qualifications, your special qualified salary, and then the chief executive officer development program, that's some extra money that's coming your way. I've made, it's up to you, obviously. I would encourage you maybe to seek out some, maybe an executive coach or something that is more like a leadership coach for you. Some of these things in here are more professional coaching, and we all need that too. But maybe just a, you know, one-on-one. And when you're at the top, it's lonely sometimes. And so it's good to have a friend out there outside of the system, but who is an experienced leader to just talk things over with and work through these things. So again, that's up to you. It's just a suggestion for you. Take that for what it's worth. And then section seven point seven. Not a real fan of, of this section. Maybe it's coming out of the military, but you know, I'm thinking about let's say you were the leader of a flying wing and the goal was to have eighty, eighty-five percent on-time performance for your takeoffs for the whole year. Maintenance people involved in that. Obviously, all the aviators and the pilots are involved in that. But somehow the general officer gets a bonus at the end of the year because everybody who worked for him busted their butts and did their job. And then he gets the bonus and nobody else does. And I, I just, I, I, I would move to strike that. I, I just don't think it's appropriate, especially for government employees at the top of the leadership chain to be getting bonuses when the rest of their employees aren't, because they're the ones really doing a lot of the work. And, and the other thing I think about too is, you know, Dr. Breslin is a person of high integrity from what I've noticed. But I can just imagine her sitting there at night, one time at eight o'clock, and she's got $500,000 to spend. And, and this thing over here is probably, even though she has integrity, I would do it. Like, huh. That might make $10,000, man. That, yeah, that could upgrade the car with that, you know? I mean, it's just a, it's just a, it's a perverse incentive to give to somebody, I think, in a government organization. And I wouldn't want that to be part of the equation in her decision-making, even though she has integrity. We're all subject to temptation, so to speak. So I will, I will move to amend the contract. Well, let me finish my comments before I make that motion. And then ten point four, again, that's communications part. And I thought that was a good thing too. I just wanted to comment on that. That we have to, we're going to meet before October and then anywhere thereafter to talk about communication. I think that's good too. But I would like to make a motion to amend the contract to strike paragraph seven point seven.
I'll second.
Do you have a motion to strike seven point seven? I'll jump in to say why we put it in there. Definitely a trend, talking with Andrew Messina from FSBA, something that is around other contracts around the state. So the reason why we, we thought about putting it in and then, and then did put it in. I look at it very much similar to you're the quarterback, you do have ten other, other positions with you that are making things happen. But that quarterback, Tom Brady gets an extra bonus when he throws X amount of touchdowns or does X amount of this. And so that was my, that was my thought, is that incentivize the, the leader to, to make sure that we're doing exactly what we should be doing. And, and also saying, thank you for doing what we should be doing and becoming an A district and making 90% graduation rate. We don't have any other other than just the normal SAMP, like, you know, the regular percentage from a, an increase in pay, so to speak. So, you know, if you were to end up, you know, having an A district and 92% rate for five, six, seven years, my thought process is let's, let's give them a kudos for that. And so, yeah, that, that was, that was the reason behind it.
Can I dialogue with you for a second?
Yeah, yeah.
So I think there's a difference though between private companies like a football team or even a corporation out there and a, and a government organization. And I, I just think it's a perverse incentive to give the leader of a government organization paid for by the taxpayers, that kind of bonus as opposed to Tom Brady's making money for the team and they're winning games. That's, that's a different animal than, like I said, I would, I would encourage you to think about that example I gave you where, you know, the, the general officer who leads an air force base meets his on-time performance for takeoffs that year for his aircraft. And he gets a, he gets a bonus and nobody else does. It's just a different animal between private organizations that are, that are for profit and then government entities like this. So I think there's a substantial difference there.
And I didn't, I didn't make it up. I think it's been, it's been done before. So that's why we added it. I mean, we do that theoretically, you know? Yeah, I mean, we, we just made, I'm not going to down, but we may just disagree on it, but it's all good. Mr. Kennedy and Ms. Spray?
Yeah, Colonel Tatum, I, I agree with the essence of what you're saying, but I have a, a big butt coming right behind it, which is, it's probably a poor choice of words, but.
Yeah, it's recorded for time immemorial now, Ms. Kennedy.
That, well, number one, I actually had an idea for the second section of seven point seven about the district graduation rate being 90% or higher. But I think they're both moot points because the board did approve a motion to authorize the Chair to negotiate. And this is the product that the Chair and Attorney Die came back with. And so I, I'm, I'm just kind of uncomfortable with like, kind of negotiating on the fly in the room or taking things out or adding things during the meeting. I think that would take us back to Ms. Spray's point, that if, if there's changes that we want to make in the contract, then that means we're not ready to approve it. And that would take me back to Ms. Spray's initial, initial motion. Frankly, I don't think Dr. Breslin probably, like, to get started and hit the ground running, she would, I'm just guessing, would probably say, I don't care, take it out. It's not that big a deal. But it takes me back to my original, we authorized the Chair to put this together with Attorney Die. And I want to, I want to respect that motion and not tinker with individual paragraphs or details of paragraphs. So that's my take on it.
Ms. Spray? Ms. Felton?
This is the only time the board collectively can talk about this contract. And by getting it so late.
Fair, fair point.
It is. I respect it. Mr. Tatum brought this up because it was one of my concerns as well. I have here a document that was shared to us. And I'm going to refer to, uh, let me see, I think it was Lee County. Lee County, yeah, has our, by the way, this document has our county, students, full-time employees, annual revenues, and the salary that's paid to the superintendent. Lee County has 88,000. This does not include charter, I don't think. Eighty-eight thousand students with 10,000 employees with a $1.07 billion budget. They pay their superintendent 222,000. Now, do they get car and all those kind of things? Yeah. I looked at, some of the benefits are about the same. And then there's a, gosh, Polk County, 99,523 students, 14,000 employees, 14,255 to be exact, with a similar budget. And that superintendent is paid 271. I don't think that this is a deal breaker. I wouldn't, I would like to remove it because to my, to Mr. Tatum's point, it's just, it's more to me, that's what we're paying the superintendent to do. That is the goal of any superintendent, to get us to an A and get our graduation rate up. I heard the report today nationally, how bad our high schools are doing across the country in reading and math. It's the superintendent's role to get the schools to bring us up to that A. And I don't think we need to have a reward for doing that because like you said, it's the people on the ground doing the work. So I, I would support that. Again, I'm going to say we didn't get this till today. And this is the first time the board collectively, and I understand we gave Mr. Cho the power to negotiate this contract. But I think probably we should in the future, once the contract is finalized, have a workshop to discuss it and approve it before it goes to a vote even. Because we don't get a chance to talk about the, the, the meat of it at all until now. So I would support your motion to take that one line out. I mean, that was the one thing that bothered me in, in the contract more than anything. It was one of those, okay, the salary up, down to this and put that in, or take that out and put the salary up. To me, this is a double whammy. So I, I would support that.
Ms. Felton?
I understand both of your points. And I do believe that going forward, that it would be good to, if we're going to have a, a contract that might be contentious, that we do sit down and talk about it in advance. But I don't believe that this is the time to do it. Right now, this has been determined between Dr. Breslin and her attorney, as well as our Chair and our attorney. And I feel. And I feel like if we're going to start pulling apart the contract, then, then Dr. Breslin should be a part of that discussion with her attorney. And it shouldn't be done sitting here in the middle of the meeting. So, I'm not going to support that at this time.
I'll give you a quick just rundown of where we came from a salary because Ms. Sprague brought up that diagram, that diagram, the median salary for all board, excuse me, for all superintendents across the state is 252. So, this contract is below that. Secondly, we advertised 220 to 260 in our advertisement. Middle of that is 240, 245 is just above that. So, that's where the 245 came from. I thought it was right, kind of in the middle of what we advertised. And then, obviously, we weren't going way out of bounds, either above or below what the median salary was for the state of Florida. And, yeah, so that's from the starting point of the salary. Down below, Sarasota, right below us, they've got, I don't know, 8,000 less kids, then he makes 10,000 more. So, I think you can always pick and say, oh, this county has more or less, and here's what, but that's their prerogative to pick their superintendent. I didn't, I wasn't a part of that contract. So, it looks like, Mr. Kennedy, were you the speaker or did you just not take off in the first name?
I do have one comment.
Yeah.
I wasn't going to talk about salary, but I just want to throw in too, I think, I think the sal, for all the reasons you mentioned, the salary is fair. And I would also be very uncomfortable if we went from one superintendent to another and we were paying the female superintendent less to do the same job. I'd be really uncomfortable with that. So, I think this is in the mark, to your point, Mr. Chair, the market that we're in and the market that, that we are specifically in in Manatee County. I think there's, there's some other things in the contract that I, that I think demonstrate where Dr. Breslin has actually taken a step toward us in fairness and in equity with the other employees. But this is about that paragraph, so I'll save those, save those comments for, for later so we can get this motion passed and then we can keep moving on.
Okay. So, we have a, we have a motion to amend the contract and remove, is it 7.7?
Yeah.
Oh, it's on there?
On the screen.
Okay. So, we have a motion to amend the contract to remove item 7.7. So, let's go ahead and vote on that. And that fails to pass two yeses, Sprague and Tatum, three noes, Choate, Felton, and Kennedy. So, that moves us back to, we had the motion and a second on the original contract that was set before us. Looks like we may be frozen.
Frozen.
I think it's frozen.
Anybody else want to comment?
Yeah, I'll go real quick. I would just like to point out that, you know, this, the salary is almost exactly, we're going from Dr. Wyson to Dr. Breslin with a salary that is essentially the same. The personal benefits, the sick pay, health insurance, her raise is in line with SAMP, like, all of these factors in the contract are exactly what are the parameters for any other employee in the district. I also want to point out in 8.1, in a termination without cause, in the previous, in Dr. Wyson's contract, this was 90 days notice in writing. Dr. Breslin has stepped that down to 30 days notice.
Right.
So, that is taking a step toward the board. And what I think is a show of, you know, good faith and she's just here to work with us and work with this district and is not asking for anything extra. In the case of that clause, she's asking for less. So, I'm very comfortable with it. Mr. Chair, I thank you for the work that you and Attorney Die, Attorney Die, same to you, that you did on behalf of the board. And I'm ready to move forward and I'm looking forward to getting started.
My screen is still frozen. So, anyone else comment? All right, let's go ahead and vote. We'll physically vote on, this is our last voting item in many ways, but we'll physically vote on 8.1, the approval of the contract for new superintendent, Dr. Lori Breslin, the school district in Manatee County. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, passes five to zero.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Now, we want to move into swear in, the new superintendent. So, Dr. Breslin, come on up and bring your family, et cetera. I know, yeah, it's awesome.
Bring everybody.
And I know swearing you in this evening is Reverend Dr. Robert Bledsoe from Church United Methodist Church.
And then we're going to take about 100 pictures.
99.
You're welcome, Dr. Breslin.
Yeah. Absolutely.
I have to stand to reach you.
All right, I'm getting out of gratitude, by the way.
We are missing my son Tatum, who is at Florida still reading Saturday.
Aren't we all?
Fam, come on, come on over this way, like...
Do you want me to?
Sorry, Todd.
Yeah, we'd like to know who we got.
Sure.
My husband, Tom, and our son, Will. Mom, retired from the school district in Manatee County. She's still a legend around here, Pam.
Yes, she is.
My dad, Randy Craig, our son, Colin Breslin, Tyler Kitchie, and my beautiful mother-in-law, Linda Breslin.
Read the Bible and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend...
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States...
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state...
That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the states.
And that I will well and faithfully perform...
And that I will well and faithfully perform...
The duties of superintendent of Manatee County School District...
The duties of superintendent of Manatee County School District.
On which I am now about to enter...
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Here. I have a thing I want to do.
Are you wanting to get a picture with all of us behind? Okay.
Okay.
As we...
I want to do it on camera. I'm going to need a moment before we go off.
Oh, get on, behind your shirt.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and for Mrs. Sprague?
Yeah, I have something I want to come down to give you.
I can't go down.
When Mr. Chapman was at the Manatee County Chamber of Edliners luncheon, I don't know what...
He's hidden in the back. He vacated that seat real quick.
But he referenced the symbol of excellence, a tradition of excellence within our field. But, there's a poem, "The torch..." Thank you. And it says, "The Lord is my light." Gosh, let me try to read this, please. "A bright shine for your life has come, and the glory of the Lord has risen upon you." Better glasses.
Your new seat is to the left.
Oh. There we go. Mr. Chapman didn't leave me a gift or anything.
Yes, he did. Lot of emails, lot of emails and phone calls, things assigned. We're jumping right into superintendent remarks. So, floor is yours.
Well, first and foremost, thank you, board, for your faith in me. This is a privilege to be able to serve this community and one that I certainly will never take lightly. And I heard your feedback and I heard your remarks. And I know we have our one on ones coming up in the near future and I look forward to further conversation. And I want to thank all of those in this room to support me. I know on a dreary Tuesday night, there are some places you would rather be. So, thank you because you do not advance in your career in any way, shape, or form on your own. It's from good parents and role models and supportive family and an amazing husband and my children. I'm just very, very thankful and blessed. Thank you again to my pastor. I think I'm going to be putting in some extra volunteer hours at church for, for the time he has spent. And just this amazing team, I feel very confident in our school districts from what I see happening in the classroom and the great teachers we have. And then this team that surrounds the work every day. Many of them are here, some are at home, probably still checking their emails and grading papers. And we are in such a wonderful place here in Manatee County. We are doing great things and will continue to do that and reach that A status, but more importantly, make sure that all of our children are safe and protected and have the opportunity to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Breslin.
All right, we're going to, we're skipping over some, some normal stuff, so don't, don't feel bad. We've got a meeting next week, a normal meeting next week. So, we'll get to some of those comments later. But I do want to jump to the board comments. We got Kennedy, Tatum, Felton, Sprague, Choate. So, Ms. Kennedy?
Yeah, I didn't really prepare anything, so I'll, now that I'm sitting here, I'm like, I probably should have. But I, Lori, Dr. Breslin, I just want to share with you what a special moment this is for me. We've been colleagues for a very long time. And this is truly one of like, if not the, one of the best moments I've had up on this dais in my time up here. And this, you are so, as we saw from the search, you are truly appreciated and admired around this district and around this community and in this building and our schools. And I'm just really looking forward to what we can do together as a team, this entire district. And, you know, I just, I'll share one, you know, we had, you and I had a conversation and I was, you know, leading up to tonight and I was kind of already celebrating and you had to slow me down and say, "We don't have, we haven't accomplished anything yet as a team. So, let's, let's hold off any celebrating until we get the work done and then we can, and then we can celebrate." So, I think that's, that will kind of stay with me and I look forward to the celebrations we have coming in the future as a district.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Thanks, Jen.
Yeah, Mr. Tatum?
Yes, congratulations, Dr. Breslin.
Thank you.
Good, it's good to see you over there. So, for a safety tip tonight, let's just all make sure within the district that we're really following all of our safety protocols. When I go around to schools and stuff, we usually are, but once in a while, I'll, I'll just notice something that we all need to keep an eye on. So, you know, as far as evolved systems go and as far as badges and stuff like that, let's just make sure that we're encouraging each other, you know, I don't want to be tattling on each other, but, but encouraging each other. You know, you don't want the day to come when you need your synergics thing and it isn't on you because you left it in your room when you went to the bathroom. And that's where you really need it because there's a fight going on in the bathroom or something like that. So, just let's, let's be safe in that way. And I wanted to take a second to tell you all quickly, the story of Lucius Quintius Cincinnatus. He was a Roman ruler. He was born about 1519. He died about 430. So, let me tell you the quick story about him. The most famous story related to Cincinnatus occurs after his retirement from public service to a simple life of farming. As Roman forces struggled to defeat the Aki people, Cincinnatus was summoned from his plow to assume complete control over the state. And after achieving a swift victory in 16 days, Cincinnatus relinquished power and its privileges, returning to the labor on his farm. Now, I don't think you have a farm, Mr. Chapman, do you, right? But I just wanted to congratulate him on such a job well done. He stepped up to the plate and he did a great job leading the district through a difficult time. And then as we just saw, right, he knew when his time came and he stepped down from the seat of power, literally, right, on his own. He knew, like, it's now time for me to quote unquote, "Go back to my farm." So, congratulations to you, but congratulations to you, well done. Good and faithful servant. And now, and now you might be wondering, well, I wonder where the name Cincinnati came from? Well, Cincinnati is the plural of Cincinnati's and the Society of Cincinnatis was actually founded after the Revolutionary War and George Washington was a member of it. And it is a, if you want to be a member of that society, you either had to be an officer of the Revolutionary Army, or now you can be a descendant of the officers of the Revolutionary Army. And so now you know how the Cincinn, the city of Cincinnati got its name. You can impress your friends at parties and maybe win Trivial Pursuit or something like that, right? There you go. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Felton?
So, when, when Dr. Breslin and I sat down for our one-on-one during the interview process, it had occurred to me that she and I had never really had a conversation.
True.
And, you know, lots of emails back and forth and, okay, I'll get on that and let me, you know, or yes, thank you very much and, you know, and lots of very polite little, you know, back and forths. But it was really actually my first time to really have a talk with her and get to know her a bit. And I was, heard wonderful things, of course, having lived and worked here in Manatee County forever and having you in the district when I was teaching. And, but now I am, I am even more excited to have you in this role. I, I felt very comfortable talking with you and felt that we will work well together. And, and I'm getting, I'm very excited to get to know you better as we go forward. And thank you very much for, for everything you have done for this district so far and for what you will do.
Thank you.
And Kevin, good job.
I'm still going to harass Kevin, so you're not totally off the hook, by the way. I've had, like I said in public, I've had many meetings with Dr. Breslin on a number of topics. And we share a lot of same views about how kids are educated, the needs of those who kind of fall behind. So, I don't think there's much more than I can say, that I, I look forward to taking this district to an A, to getting our reading and our math grades up, not just in the third grade, which I know we're focusing very high on this next school year, but the graduation rate definitely needs to go up. And I can see a lot of great things happening. You know, we do things really well here in Manatee County. And former board members said, "Be boring." We've been pretty boring, but, you know, to that thing, but we're here now. Now, we're going to go back to boring because we have work to do. And I look forward to working with you one-on-one. And, and when I saw you at the Manatee High game, I said to you and your husband, as you was walking in, "Are you ready to work 24/7?" Because that's basically what it is. And I think you're ready and you're vested. And I think it's, it's great. I think it's going to be great.
Thank you, Mrs. Sprague.
Thank you.
Yeah, exciting night.
You're good, Mrs. Felton.
There's nothing, there's nothing like you're a homegrown person, taking over where they were born, raised, worked, et cetera, as one of those. I can't imagine the way you're feeling now, being able, the pride that you have in Manatee County, to now take it over and, and run with it. So, I'm super excited. I can't wait. And we're going to, it's only up from here. And good things are going to be happening in Manatee County like always. So, thank you for your willingness to step up and do this job. It's not easy. I'll say 23/7. I'll give you an hour. I'll give you an hour a week. You can have your time to yourself.
Thank you.
But, no, we really appreciate it, look forward to it. To the public, we got a good one. We nailed it. And we're going to have a, have a good time celebrating this, but it's back to work tomorrow. Thank you, everybody, the staff, getting everything together, all the teachers out there, all of our, our staff members, et cetera. Thank you very much. And we'll see you next week. We are officially adjourned.